Called all the meeting of Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, July 27, 2021, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present, Mr. Vicky Morgan, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Crystal D'Avola, Ms. Peola Gonzalez Fusiliere, Mr. Casey Phelan, and myself, Marshal Kendrick. Board members absent, none. Let the record indicate that a form of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice that this meeting was posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Invitation will be given by Ms. Fusiliere and pledges by Mr. Fernandez.
Let's pray. God, thank you so much for bringing us here today, for allowing us the opportunity to serve you in everything that we do. I pray for SS leaders, those on the national level, to make the best decisions possible for our communities and everyone that we serve. I pray so much today for our students, staff, educators, everyone going back to the classroom within the next few weeks. I pray that they may enjoy the last few weeks of their summer and that they may come back refreshed and prepared for the new school year. Keep us safe with everything going on in the world and may we honor and serve you in all that we do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Join me in a pledge of allegiance to Christ. Jesus Christ.
Stop it.
What are you doing?
That's not funny.
No, I'm sorry. I'm on decongesting medicine, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Allergies?
Policy update.
Here it comes. Mrs. Kinimer.
Hello there. I know this is, policy update is a little bit different than you're used to seeing since it's in resolution format. TASP is right now in the middle of Update 117 and 118, which are their two first major legislative updates. So, they're recommending that we pass this one as a resolution and they will get the specific policy text back to us because they're getting this request from a large number of districts. What is prompting this is ESER III application for funding and the comments that were made by the Commissioner of Education. He suggested that the district should have a policy in place, or the districts generally should have a policy in place that addresses how we are going to provide the public notice of grant applications. That's not something that's traditionally been included in TASP model policies before, so that's a provision that they'll be adding. So, the resolution tonight is just simply declaring that we want to add that provision to our policy. Are there any questions?
We're doing this without knowing what's in it.
So, that provision is absolutely not in policy at all and TASP has not adopted or drafted the sample language. As you know, we rely on them for model language. They are making this update to the 800 and something different districts across the state and have not developed those specific standardized policy provisions yet. It is necessary for us to have a policy in place for the application that is due today. So, we have to have a policy in place and then we can address whether or not we will want to adjust the policy language once we have that finalized draft from them.
Well, this is just a resolution. It's not actually policy. It's an addenda basically to our policy, but it's a resolution.
Yes. So, what it is doing is it is authorizing us, right, to draft a provision that's consistent with the terms of the resolution for policy. We will bring that policy back to you guys as an FYI once we get the formal text of it. And if at that time you're concerned with the draft of language or any of that, then we'll go ahead and work on editing that language to get it specific to Pasadena ISD rather than the language that they're going to recommend be standardized for the state.
Okay. Thank you, Judy.
Yep.
Any other questions? It's a policy to take care of policies.
Yeah, pretty much, yep. And it's just that one specific policy provision and policy code. That's right.
Catch ya all. Okay. We're going to adjourn to closed session, present the Texas Government Code, Section 551, Point 074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or your complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and termination of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of his attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM. We're going to reconvene in open session. First item, it's seven o'clock.
Yes, sir.
And this first item, we're going to take care of special recognition. Ms. Morgan, would you stand up here, please?
No.
You won, okay. Vicky was president last year and, as always, your leadership was unbelievable. You went through some times that you didn't thought you'd ever go through that we've been through last year and you handled it wonderfully. It was great grace and love and we appreciate you. Congratulations.
Well, board members, we have a special recognition tonight that is no stranger to special recognition. As we gear up for the new school year, we'll be seeing a lot of students and teachers up here, but today we're going to recognize a department. This is the seventh consecutive year that the Business Office has been awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. If you remember, we've brought them up here several times for TASBO awards, but this is the Association of School Business Officials, ASBO, created this award over 45 years ago to recognize school districts that have met the program's high standards for financial reporting and transparency. And as you know, the Business Office is led by Carla Merka, our Chief Financial Officer, Derek Gillard. Derek's here probably. Is he here? Not here, okay. Our Executive Director of Finance, Maritza Davis, Director of Accounting, I don't know who else here, Bethany Jordan, Director of Budget, and Lori Pruitt, Director of Purchasing. So, this award acknowledges to stakeholders in the community our commitment to financial transparency and being good stewards of public funds. So, I think there's a presentation at this time, is that right? Then we're just going to bring y'all up here, you and your team, and celebrate you. All right. And they probably have a beautiful plaque somewhere, but... It's on its way.
But I'd do it again then. Congratulations, thank you, guys.
And that is it for tonight, Mr. Kendrick.
Okay. I'm going to take upon a personal privilege and change the agenda before we have public comments and go straight to personnel. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, I move that we approve Addenda Pages A through J.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Morgan, second, Mr. Fernandez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, no. Motion passes.
I'd like to introduce these. I know that we've got some excited people out there. First, Brittany Sabinski. Is Brittany here? Brittany, stand up so that we can congratulate you. Brittany has been named to the position of Counselor/Parent Coordinator at Fred Roberts Middle School. And I see you have family with you.
I do.
Will you introduce them, please?
Yes, this is my husband Blake and this is our daughter Tyler.
Awesome. Congratulations.
And I just wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity as well as the pride of me and the Roberts family for joining us this morning tonight.
I know you will be missed at CTE as well, so...
Thank you.
Next is Samantha Archundia, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Hey, Samantha. Samantha's been named Diagnostician with Special Ed and we congratulate you in your new position. You have family with you?
Yes, I have my husband here and my son.
Very good. Congratulations. Oh, there you go. Congratulations.
You can take her to eat now.
Congratulations. Next is Selena Contreras. Selena has been named Instructional Specialist for Math K through 4 and we look forward to your new service in this new position. Do you have family?
Thank you, yes I do.
Good.
This is my husband Carlos and our two girls, Arissa and...
Ah, very good. Congratulations. Next is Lindsay Do.
Yay!
Hey, Lindsay. Lindsay has been named Data Specialist and we congratulate you in your new position. Do you have family with you?
Yes, I do. I have my husband Brian with me and our two kids, Felix and Archie. I want to thank the board and I want to thank you, Dr. Powell. I want to thank my PISD family and I want to thank my CNI family, my math family. Especially Dr. Kano. You are a mentor to me and I really appreciate you for all you've done for me and thank you for welcoming me to my new work family. Really appreciate that and shout out to Selfies in high school and my alma mater and where I actually had Donna as my computer science teacher. And my alma mater where Mrs. and Mr. Kendrick slide by.
Everybody's getting old.
You need to cue the music. Cue the music, sir.
Was that you that said that, Troy?
It was me.
All right, congratulations. Next, we have a new Instructional Specialist for Math 7 through 8 and this is Elizabeth Harris and you need to welcome her to PISD. Make her feel really welcome because she's coming from another district. Elizabeth? Did you bring family with you?
I did. This is my husband Lance, who is actually also a social studies teacher at Rayburn. And this is our son Will and our son Sam.
Very good. Congratulations. Make her feel welcome, we want her to stay. Next is Stephanie Nelson. Is Stephanie here? Stephanie, congratulations. She's been named Instructional Specialist for Social Studies 5 through 6. Congratulations. Do you have family with you?
Yeah, because I'm like half Pasadena with me. My mom, my brother Billy, my brother Joey, my son Jaden, my stepmom Carolyn, and my dad.
Oh, all right. Congratulations. Next is, we are naming Mr. Charles Canales to Specialist Kate with Career and Technology Education. Mr. Canales cannot be here with us tonight, but we certainly wish him well and when you see him, he's coming back to Pasadena. Or he's already here, but he did come back to Pasadena. Anyway, make sure when you see him, you congratulate him in his new position. Next, we have Shawna Gagno and Shawna is not a stranger to us. Shawna, are you here? There she is, back in the back. Shawna, congratulations. She's been named Director of Facilities and Construction. Congratulations. Did you bring family with you?
Just my lovely work family.
Awesome, awesome. Congratulations. And next, I understand we have somebody online. This is Linda Flores' daughter and Linda has just been named Principal at Gardens Elementary. Linda, we wish you well. I know you're on vacation and you're a few miles away, but we certainly wish you...
She wants me to thank everyone and all for support and myself and my brother here in her honor and she's in France, it's 2:00 AM.
She's probably still out.
They're hard overloading right now to get through the night.
Awesome, awesome. Congratulations, Linda.
And what awesome kids to come and represent mom.
I know.
Bonus points.
Last but not...
Your math is good.
Oh, okay. Great principal.
Last but not least, we have Ms. Bobby McCain, who has been named Executive Director with Human Resources. Bobby? So proud of you. I know you've got family here.
I do, thank you. I want to thank the board. I'm looking forward to this new experience. So, thank you so very much. I have my dad, Bobby, and my mom, Carolyn.
You got a lot of people rooting for you, but you're going to be some tough shoes to fill.
She'll do it.
Sorry, Debbie.
And that is the end of personnel.
Thank you very much.
So, if they want to sneak out, they can.
Yes. If y'all would like to sneak out and not stay for business, you're certainly welcome to, or you can stay for the business meeting.
Or you can take your mother-in-law for a nice dinner.
We all forget our mother-in-law sometimes, huh? What happens?
What a beautiful ribbon in that girl's face.
Give them a chance to get out of here.
I was getting ready to tell them to leave and I said, "Vicky, that's not your clothes." Sorry.
Oh, well, who would care?
You're used to it. About seven or eight.
I don't see Harmon Williams on here.
Or if I get too late, I think it's...
Oh, I see, I see. They've got that sun clearly too annoying.
It's absolutely wrong. Yeah, we checked our...
We're going to do public comments now. I need to read this. "We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints that come out of an individual student or employee should seek resolution through the district's governance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy, DGBA, FNG, or GB. Along those lines, we ask that those speakers respect the privacy right of others and in doing so refrain from hanging employees or students during the public comment portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. Remember, this admission goes for positive or negative contents." Okay? Mr. Mario Hernandez? You got three minutes and Ms. Morgan will keep your time.
I got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Mario Hernandez. Today I will be speaking about my concerns on the cost for the new PISD administration school building. My understanding is that the new construction has been planned since 2011 and has been set back due to the projects having, other projects having priority. The new construction proposes a budget of $27 million for a facility that will house the Departments of Human Resources, Tax, Police, Curriculum and Instruction, Student Services, Purchasing, Payroll, Accounting, Workers' Compensation, Grants, as well as Boardrooms and Training Rooms. The current administration has a building footprint of 98,000 square feet. The proposed building has increased the building footprint by 29%, making the building 27,000 square foot larger. To be able to visualize this, the South Houston High School Early College Annex has a building footprint of 29,464 square feet. This school has the capacity to serve 350 students plus teachers and administrators. But let's get into cost. The new PISD administration building is proposing a budget of $27 million. This means that the cost per square foot is around $216. On a daily basis, this building will serve an average of 305 to 400 people, meaning that the cost per person will be an average of $67,000 to $88,000 per person. To compare this number, I've included a cost of Ellis Smith Elementary. The budget approved in 2011 for this school was of $19.5 million. This money funded the demolition as well as the cost of design and the construction of the building. $15.6 million was the overall budget to use for this construction. The facility has a building footprint of 100,000 square feet and can serve up to 750 students plus teachers and administrators. The cost per square foot is $156. The cost per person was $21,000.
You have one minute.
In comparison, this new administration building is three times the cost of any school in PISD. This is comparing the amount of people served per square foot cost. It seems absurd to introduce the construction of an administrative building in a year where construction costs have been at its highest. I don't oppose on having a new administration building. What I'm opposing to is the indulgent budget proposed for this new building. We don't need a castle to run a school district efficiently. We need to provide our students with the best quality and space and resources to succeed. I was born, raised, and still live in Pasadena and I understand the quality of schools that this district is providing. The lack of maintenance and resources in our school has been a laughing matter for many years. I believe it is time to really think about the quality of education and space that we are providing to our students. Start realizing that we are a better chance of becoming an exceptional district by providing our students with the best quality schools and education.
That's your time.
Thank you. Eddie Juarez?
No, it's Juarez.
Eddie Juarez.
Eddie Juarez.
Is he here?
It's a different Eddie.
Okay. April, we're sitting here.
You have three minutes and I'll let you know in one minute.
Dr. Powell, Mr. President, Board, I've heard so many negative things about administration building that I couldn't sit by quietly anymore. I've been in this district for eight years and I am so proud to serve a district that puts kids above everything else. This administration is the heart of our district and our heart is on life support. It's failing. We need a new heart. Everyone in this building are the magic makers. We are the wizard behind the curtain. We're the wish granters. We have the curriculum, the special education, the programs, the recruiting, the hiring, the training. So much magic happens in this building and it's falling apart around us for us to keep competing, for us to give our children the quality education with the outstanding healthcare, mental health, education, academic. We focus on the whole child. Everyone in this building collaborates together to be the best so that our kids can be the best and we can't do it in rubble. We need a building that is commensurate with what we want to produce. We want to produce the best. Our kids deserve the best. We want to recruit. We want to train. We want to have special programs, create such magical things that we see every day. Our sole purpose is college and career readiness. We can't do that if we don't have the right people. We can't have the right people if we don't have the right tools. I implore you, I know you carry the weight of this district on your shoulders. I know you all go home and you think about this and you lose sleep over it, but not everyone has a negative take on this. Most of my peers feel the same way I do. I encourage everyone to get up and tell you how much we support everything you do for our kids, for our staff, for everyone. My office is in the back of this building. I can't put a number on how many people fall because our floors are uneven and they run and get me and they say, "April, quick, come, somebody fell and got hurt because you don't see the uneven floor." My chair rolls and the only reason it stops is when I hit my desk and I don't want to complain because when I go down to child nutrition, at least my floor tilts. Their floor doesn't meet the wall. The outside's coming in. I feel ashamed to even complain about the slope in my office when I see what's going on in other areas of this building. So, I want you to know, I know you've got tough decisions, but I support doing the right thing for our staff and for our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Williams?
You have three minutes, I'll let you know in one minute.
Good evening. I'm Richard Williams, Building Automation Specialist for the district. As she said, the heartbeat is failing. Shed a little light on what nobody else sees is the heartbeat, the HVAC, electrical, the foundation, uneven foundation. There's a lack of moisture barrier which causes humidity issues. Among, the building was built as a mall with 20 single zone air handlers feeding smaller buildings, smaller offices. Now we've put more and more walls inside of these offices with one thermostat to control 20, 30 different offices in this building. It doesn't control that way. You can range from 65 to 80 degrees on a given day. The mechanical issues, it's outdated, it's obsolete. We have pneumatics in here that you cannot control. We have valves that people come and change every day because you can't control them virtually. Saving money, we run the air conditioning 24/7, the chiller plant, which is our most consuming air conditioning equipment, 24 hours because we have to keep PD cool and just to recover for the next day during the summer months. In the new building, it's proposed to have DX units, which PD would run on its own and we wouldn't have to run the entire building to keep everyone cool. Due to the lack of control, we have humidity issues, equipment failure, pipe corrosion, and discomfort among everybody. As long as you can have happy people, happy people will work and if you give them a better place to work, we have better outcomes, just like students. We're here every day, more than everybody. So, to give everybody some light on what we don't see behind the walls and above the ceilings, it's not good. This building is in need of major renovations which are not feasible and that's all I get to say.
Thank you.
And board members, I just want to say, I'd put our maintenance department up against any maintenance department in the state of Texas or anywhere. These guys and gals that run this department under Tom's direction are top-notch. They're here weekends, nights. I've seen them in the middle of the night, you name it, trying to repair schools and buildings. So, I just, the negative that's said about y'all is not true and I love the maintenance department. I think I've shown that as superintendent and as this board, but thank you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you and we'll continue to help make your situation better and better and better. So, thank you.
Jennifer Smith?
You have three minutes, I'll let you know in one minute.
Good evening. I'm also here to address the building. Working in the Finance Office, every day I have to take my computer home to make sure that it does not rain because when it rains, it leaks in my cubicle. I have to cover my monitors and CPU with garbage bags to make sure that there's no water on my computer when I come in. It also leaks throughout our department. We've had to have carpet pulled in several different areas because of mold and water seeping up from the foundation. seeping up from the foundation. Excuse me. I'm on several different allergy medications for mold and different, just things that are in the air here. Everyone coughs and sneezes. We have one employee who coughs literally all day long, and sometimes, as April said, you find yourself half under your desk because your floor slopes, and you have to pull yourself back out from under it. We also have the temperature fluctuations. Some of our employees wear gloves, sweaters. We have blankets on because it's so cold in one area to make it livable in another area. So this project has been pushed off several times. We want to do what's best for our kids, but eventually we do have to do something for the people in this building. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Edric Valdez?
You have three minutes, I'll let you know in one minute.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Edric Valdez, and I am a recent graduate from Pasadena High School, class of 2020. I'm here to speak up against the construction of the $27 million administrative building at Mickey Gilly Boulevard. Think of the citizen in the north side of Pasadena who will have a more difficult time accessing the building, especially for the people who had difficulty with transportation. This would includes senior citizens, low-income citizen, and young people who does not, who do, do those always have transportation. Do you notice all the police cars parked outside, they will be gone, and people in this area will feel less safe? Do you consider those costs? So please keep administration building in District E for better accessibility for the people of North Pasadena. Stop the relocation of our administration building. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Benner?
You have three minutes, I'll let you know in one minute.
I won't need it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you just a minute. Several people have already mentioned a number of the things that I had written down to mention, but I want to tell you that as the, one of the responsibilities I have in the curriculum department is facilities, so I'm kind of intimately aware of some of the problems. And any other opportunity, I would never be here to complain, so take this as affirmation. Thank you so much for being willing to relocate us or to build us a newer facility. The people in our department work really hard and often very late hours and are some of the most talented people I've ever known, and they work under the conditions that sometimes make them sick. There's a number of people through the years that we've had to relocate completely out of this building because of the respiratory conditions that were caused by the moisture, the mold, and the different conditions that are related to the facility being old. And more than that, we have members of us, of our department, that stay sick, that cough every day, that get well when we go home for vacations and holidays, and then immediately get sick again when we return. And so it's very important for us to have a place where we can work and be healthy, and I just wanted to say thank you for moving forward with this project to provide us with a workspace that will help us work even harder and make you prouder every year, so thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Brewster?
You have three minutes, I'll let you know in one minute.
Dr. Powell, President Kendrick, I'm Danny Brewster. I'm a grad of Genoa, Beverly Hills, and Doby. I also am an architect, not on this, not associated with this project at all, but as just a friend of the district. I talked to the architects who were involved in turning this facility into an administration building in '85, and they told me a lot about it. The original structure was put up by developers who were looking for a very, very, very quick buck. We build schools to last 50 and 60 years. This facility was built to make a little bit of money for their developers in about 10 years. This facility does not meet any energy code, does not meet the building codes that we have now. The facility, when we took it on, my, the folks that I went to work for, understand that the floors weren't even poured all at once. Each sub-leasee that bought into this very low-rent mall had to pour their own floor, and so they would pour it up to the wall, so that's why all you hear about all the complaints about the floors. They were all poured independently without engineering. So when you have a project like this and a building like this, the fact that they keep it looking really great doesn't change the fact that the older this building gets, the more expensive this building gets to run. It becomes very, very, very expensive. That doesn't even take into account, as an architect, what we understand is, is we haven't designed buildings without windows since the 80s. Everybody knows that design psychology, people understand that people need a view, people need to see out of a building, people need windows. The health of the environment of this building is untenable, and it's completely inappropriate for the, for what it serves.
One minute.
And that's really mainly what I wanted to say. This is also, I mean, ceiling fans in here, I'm in a lot of school districts all the time, and it's not a lot to say that this building needs improvement. I would also, to your point, you can't, it's apples to oranges to compare the cost per person from an office building, what an admin is, and a school, because schools have hundreds of rooms with 35 people in them. So that's an apples to oranges, so you'd want to compare this with an office building rather than a school. And other than that, this can be the focal point of the district. This can be the first thing people see when they come to this district, and you've got some really, really nice facilities in this district, and perhaps your administration area could live up to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate all your comments, and we'll move on with the agenda. Appreciate you being here. First item is consent agenda.
Mr. President, go ahead. I second the motion.
Who did it first?
Nilda.
Nilda. Okay, motion made by Mrs. Sullivan, second by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce, no, motion passes. Okay, we did administration, now we go to item two in personnel. Consideration possible approval of additional personnel, reorganizations, and reclassifications for 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions?
So Board members, in June, you did some of the approving of some restructuring of technology, of course, some dispatchers as well as other positions. There were a few cleanup items, so these are really cleanup items. We missed a person here or there that was on the same job description as the other individuals brought forward, so we just want to make sure we're clean on that, as well as two federal positions for resource specialists. We have a lot of students that are served in the resource program in our schools, and this will, of course, help in making sure those teachers are supported and students are supported. So those are just some of the big items. You see some savings here from the restructuring and some of the autism grant, and so it's really a cost of federal program when you add it all together and subtract out what you're getting rid of.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All pounce, no, motion passes. Now, item three, consideration possible approval in a local agreement between Pasadena ISD and Texas Association of School Boards, TASB, HR services for pay systems, extracurricular duty pay, staff reviews to be conducted during the 2021, 22 school year for a cost of $102,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
So Board members, I don't have to tell you, we're the 17th largest district in the state of Texas, so we have over 8,300 employees. So we want to, since we haven't since '96, '97, do an audit of our positions, the pay for those positions, to see where we have the greatest needs, and of course, it just helps in the budget process. So this is just a process that will bring data forward that we can use in having discussions about future positions that we may add, or of course, take away, depending on our enrollment and other things that happen in our, growth of our district, and then of course, the pay that goes along with that or the compensation.
Thank you. Have we voted on that?
No.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
No joke.
I think it's been a long time coming, and I think that it's a great idea that we go ahead and move forward.
We've got to be competitive.
Absolutely.
Because we want the best and the brightest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce, no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval of benefit changes for plan year 2020.
2021, 2022.
I'm sorry, can't even read. 2022.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any kind of discussion, questions?
We do have a representative from Gallagher here. We have Maggie Parker that's here. I know there's some additional, that the insurance committee looked at, some additional premium costs. It's very low for Plan Four and Five, as you can see outlined in your book. They even added a Plan Three, the Kelsey Plan. I think employees are going to be really excited about that, and the cost, there's no deductible that you have to meet, there's co-pays, and correct me when I'm wrong, that's for Tony or Maggie, but I think the employees are going to be really excited about that plan. The greatest increase is that Plan Two, and we've had a lot of discussions about Plan Two and what it costs the district. We're very fortunate, very blessed to have a self-funded. This is a great benefit to our employees. Tony, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I want to say on that Kelsey Plan, there will be a deductible, but for a regular office visit, it will be a co-pay. So if you were in the hospital or something like that, there would be a deductible, but an office visit would be a co-pay versus going with a deductible.
Do you want to talk about Plan Two and the increase there, just kind of the cost it is to the district for that plan?
Yes. Gallagher several times a year gives us a report on how much each plan costs our health fund, and Plan Two, per employee per month, almost doubles what it costs us to do Plan Four and Plan Five, and so we felt, the insurance committee felt like it was more important for those guys to take on more share of the burden on the premiums than the Plans Four and Plans Five, and so that was why the decision was made to increase that more than Plan Four and Plan Five.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Is our clinic, it's located over on Pasadena Boulevard, still a benefit to the district?
I think it's a great benefit. In fact, Dr. Hurtado, the current doctor there, and then of course, the staff, are many times the primary care physician for many of our employees, so when I've been in to see the doctor, there's a full waiting room, and they've done a great job being convenient, but also giving great care and keeping our staff healthy.
Thank you.
Telehealth, don't forget about telehealth. ReadyMD, it's like a little commercial. That's also a great benefit to our staff and to our, you know, families.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I think Plan Four, my understanding, has the most participants, and I think now with this Plan Three, a lot of them are going to jump on that, maybe taking advantage of it through my wife in the district. I think that that might be a good plan as well, so.
Just as we've done in the past, we're going to do a big educational push, and so we'll go out to campuses and departments and go over what the plans look like and give them the ability to ask questions so that they fully understand, so they can make an educated decision on their insurance selection.
Absolutely. Another benefit of PISD.
Thank you. Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce, no, motion passes. We have five certified personnel, for information only, and support personnel for 2020, 2021, for information only. Education section, I did want to go back and remind you too that there's a donation section that we sometimes forget, that is monies that are donated by individuals or organizations to the schools for special things, and they couldn't do without them, and it's very generous of our people and our client base, I guess you might say, and including industry, to do these kind of things for our schools. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Consideration possible approval of 2021, 2022 student code of conduct.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I think the format is absolutely wonderful.
Darla, did you hear that? Are you out there? I'm sure she is. They like the format, so there you go.
I didn't see any changes highlighted or anything, Darla. Were there major changes?
There were not major changes, some minor things, but we did a comparison, went through and looked at what we currently have and what's going to be having, so I think what you're speaking about, the regulations, that we didn't see a huge change in that.
Good.
So just aligned with TASB.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Darla. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce, no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval to enter to an interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Pasadena Elementary School District for music therapy for the 21, 2022 school year for the cost of $17,834.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How many students do we have in this program?
Ms. Barrett, do you want to come up to the microphone?
This is music therapy.
Currently, we have eight students in the program, and the therapist comes once a week.
Comes to the district. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Stay close by, just in case.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce, no, motion carries. Consideration possible approval to enter to an interlocal agreement between the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and Pasadena ISD for training staff to support children with autism for a cost of $12,500.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions?
Small price. $12,500 for training. Debbie? What exactly are they going to be doing?
Okay, so we, last year, obtained a million-dollar grant, and so that was only to train the elementary teachers.
Right.
So we are budgeting to use a different money to pay for the training of secondary teachers so we can carry that training on up.
Awesome.
And so it's a virtual training, and all the secondary teachers of students with autism will be trained.
And our students with autism, the number of students district-wide has definitely grown over the last, what, five years or so?
Substantially, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You have any idea how many students we have district-wide?
I do not, off the top of my head, know that number.
Okay. I'd be interested to see a number.
Okay, I will get it.
No biggie. No biggie. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce, no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval of revised ADA snapshot time for selected early college high school students in grades 11 and 12.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions?
I have one question. Do we have an approximate total of the amount of the number of students from all of early college high schools for this year?
Karen, do we have an enrollment number for next year for early college high school?
It's approximately 110 per campus, per grade level.
So a little over 400 per school.
Per campus.
Awesome. But the ones at San Jack would be 50% of that.
Okay.
That we're addressing here tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pounce, no, motion carries. Policy section, consideration possible approval of board resolution regarding SIR III and Policy CB Local, State, and Federal Reserve.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce, no, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of budget amendments for June.
Moved that we approve the budget amendments.
And I second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce, no, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of SIR Schedule Book for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Finanzas. Any discussion?
So board members, I want to draw your attention to the stipends and I'll just tell you because I think I drew your attention to it as you got your book, for next year with the SIR funds, we're going to give all classroom teachers, which will be spelled out, $1,500 stipend and all other employees, $1,000 stipend. So I think that's going to be, if this is approved tonight, I think that's going to be greatly appreciated by staff. You'll be some popular people up here. I know the last two years you've given a stipend what could be budgeted for. We're thankful for the SIR funds. We're also thankful for how hard everyone has worked and we know we've got a lot of work to do this coming school year. So if this is approved, this salary, then that would be possible for all employees to receive that $1,500 for our classroom teachers and then $1,000 for all other employees.
That's an easy vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries.
That's a tune of about $28 million over the next two years.
Awesome. Awesome. Congratulations.
We're required to discuss the impact of property value change, the indicators number 20 on the first report. Ms. Carla?
Hello, I'll make this quick. This is part of a requirement that we have to do. When this originally came out with the first report, it was to discuss the lag because when we would do the template, the tax season that we always calculated budget on was always a year behind. Since House Bill Three came out, now you do your tax based on the current year, which is difficult because we start budget season in January and we have to estimate what we think the certified values are going to be. We didn't actually receive certified values till late Thursday night and then from there we do all kinds of calculations, so. But the main thing that we need to talk about is so you can see the growth in the district on how the property is growing. And so you can see last year that our certified value was 16 billion and this year we're at 17 billion. And that does bring in property value and that brings in revenue. Once we got our certified value, because remember in the budget, I'd been estimating that we were going to lose two cents on the M and O tax rate. Well, once we got that and we ran the calculations, it's called the MICR, we have all kinds of little funny names for stuff, but we actually get to use the tax rate for a dollar point oh six nine four, which is still a decrease for our taxpayers. So I'm sure they're going to appreciate that on their tax property when they see their values and how much they owe us because that is going down and that's all due to y'all's hard work and being great taxpayer, or great stewards of taxpayer dollars. And so that's really what we talk about is so you can see the growth on the property value.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Good job, Carla.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You're the department we just talked about a while ago, didn't we?
Seven times.
Good job. Item four, consideration possible approval and order in authorizing the issuance of Pasadena Independent District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds on one or more series, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing a pricing officer to approve the amount, the interest rate, pricing include the terms thereof and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions? We have Mr. Robuck.
So, yes, board members, we have Mr. Robuck here, our friend, and Tanya Fisher, is she here as well?
She has not made it yet, but I can handle her.
That's okay. You got it. Okay. Well, you got good news for us, don't you?
I do, I do. As Ms. Merka, by the way, I'm John Robuck with BOK Financial Carries, president of board members, Dr. Powell, it's good to see you all this evening.
Good to see you.
I do have a good, good news and good opportunity for the district to save some money and continue the fiscal responsibility that y'all have had over the last years that Mrs. Merka just talked about. I do have a presentation I'd like to go through and as I always do when I come out here, I like to first talk about the bond market. This is the bond buyer index. This chart shows municipal bonds on weekly average. Far right there on the, on the chart is the current rate of a 2.03%.
Wow.
To put that in context, that's one basis point or .01% off of all-time lows of the 2.02 that we hit about a year and a half ago and well below the historical average of a 4.2%. So as a result of this, we have an opportunity to take existing bonds we have outstanding with a higher interest rate and refinance them with a lower interest rate, kind of like you would a mortgage, but we're not going to extend the term. We're going to keep the same term of the original bonds and just do an interest, interest rate swap. Basically take higher rates, replace them with lower rates and take savings and generate debt service savings for the district. And before I get into the actual details of the refunding, I want to show you what y'all have done in the past. Since 2012, the district has done eight different refundings and two different cash deficiences, which have saved over $64 million for taxpayers. So we took bonds that were outstanding, refinanced them lower and lowered debt service cost and as a result, have done a good job managing the tax rate, lowering the tax rate going forward. We have several bond issues outstanding. This chart shows the call dates for those bonds. Currently, we have 24, about $22.6 million that are currently callable, which we're going to discuss tonight. But going forward, you have about $205 million of bonds that are callable in the next three years that we can refinance for interest cost savings for taxpayers. And like I said earlier, the $22.6 million of bonds that are currently refunding are the 2012A bonds. They have an interest rate of 4% to 5% outstanding and we're going to reduce those hopefully below 2%.
Wow.
Based on current market. And this is what it will look like. A lot of numbers on this page. This is the current debt service requirements, principal and interest due by the district each year on the far left side. We're going to refinance that next column, the less the debt service and refunded bonds is, we have total debt service about $41.1 million we're going to refinance with the 2021 refunding bonds and as a result, will hopefully generate more than what we're showing there in the yellow column of about $305,000 a year until we get to the principal amounts there will be, a little more than that, about $645,000 for a total of $7.8 million. And on a present value savings, that's 27.3, almost 27.4%. 3% is really good. 5% is a home run. 10% is unbelievable. 27, really?
We're not rapping.
So hopefully we do better than this, but yeah, it's a huge number, huge number. You don't see that very often. And to accomplish that, we're asking you to approve a parameter orders tonight that allows us to move forward, apply for the permanent school fund guarantee to get the AAA rating, get our documents and orders and then price on the week of October 11th and then close after the call date or within 90 days of the call date on November 18th of 2021 and close the deal at that, at that time and lock in those savings. Tanya is not here, but she did write the parameter ordinance. I'm her and I'm familiar with it. If you have any questions, we have to answer questions about the financing or the legal documents.
We appreciate the effort. $7.8 million is a fantastic savings.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pounce no.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're in operating section. Consideration possible approval of construction contract for the new administration building replacement project, Sterling Structures, Sterling Structures, Inc. in the amount of $29, 26,496,600.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. You know, during the most recent trustee election, much negativity was expressed by at least two of our sitting trustees, but their concerns are basically a moot point. This is a done deal. This was voted on, this was accepted by this board and there's nothing that can be done about it. So I say let's vote on this.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay.
I really appreciate what everyone said here tonight. I came in here with an open mind and I like what the gentleman in the back said with the button up shirt, the gold chain. I like what he said when it comes to, you know, having a building that people are proud of. That's what I think when it comes to our schools because, you know, we have experienced, like y'all said, y'all have experienced some things here in this admin building that needs fixing. We have experienced similar things in schools here throughout Pasadena. When you have buildings that students, teachers and staff are proud of, they do work harder. So I am not against the admin building. I just want to know how we take priorities when it comes to which buildings we are going to fix because I am an educator, I am a teacher. I think that we should always, you know, put our children first, our students. They should have safe learning conditions. And what I will say as a teacher is that our learning conditions are reflected in our working conditions. I do remember when we went a week without AC, there was one teacher who I admire, she works really hard. She was there until 5:00, 6:00 PM helping students with their math homework, a hard worker. Pasadena is very lucky to have her. And when we went one week without AC, I remember her telling me, you know what, I don't have to be here next year. If I want, I can go to another district, I can go to another school where they will actually provide me with AC, something so basic. And I know at the last school board meeting, someone mentioned no AC back in the day. I'm not sure what year that was, but those buildings had windows where you could at least open it to, you know, have some fresh air. At Pasadena, in my classroom, we do not have windows to let the air in when the AC wasn't working. So those are the points that I just wanted to make. I want to be transparent about where I stand. I appreciate all the comments and will respectfully vote our way tonight.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Any other comments?
Yes, sure.
You know, despite the misconception, I've never stated that I was against the administration building. In fact, I'm really thankful for Dan explaining things to me from the beginning. I am, I love this district and, you know, my husband worked for the district, my kids are part of this district and I care about moving the district forward and if this is going to help and it's going to improve our pride in the district, I want that as well. I do have a question about how the contractors are selected. I'd like to get some clarification about that. Those questions have been brought up and so I'd like some clarification.
So we have, I'll bring Kevin forward as well as if Derek wants to answer any questions as well. We have a process in our district. I think we had 12 quality contractors who bid this job and there's a process that they go through and score. So it's not always just the lowest bidder. In this case, we were very pleased that this came in under budget with all the talk of construction costs, but it's based on reputation. It's based on the fact of whether they've built buildings like this in the past. This is a tilt-up construction, which is much different than perhaps what we do at the majority of our construction projects. And of course, to me, as superintendent who goes out, you know, I had one contractor tell me, you're the first superintendent I've seen out on a job, but I really like the construction superintendents. They're important to me as far as telling me about the timeline and explaining things to me and making sure that we are giving our community what they need. So we were excited that we had worked with the superintendent as well that's going to work on this project. So again, they're here tonight, Sterling Contractors is here, Michael Gordy, the president, if you don't mind standing so my board can see you. They're doing work for us already at Bondi, they've done work in the past at the renovations of Beverly Hills, the list of projects goes on. But Kevin, do you want to come up and kind of talk about those areas and then Derek, if there's anything you want to share as well with the purchasing department piece of it?
The district does utilize competitive sealed proposal as our method of procurement. So we work directly with the purchasing department. Director of Purchasing oversees the whole process to make sure we follow all the rules and regulations for a CSP bid. We do publicly bid it out. We have a public reading of the bids, contractors come for that, answer any questions back and forth through addendum that come up through the process. And then the selection process, actually there's certain areas that are reviewed and ranked by the purchasing department, check all the references. Then we bring our team together. I think we had probably seven people on the committee, facilities, a couple of people from the architectural firm. Of course, the director of purchasing comes and oversees that whole process. We do rank each of the contractors and relative experience, their team, some pretty good points on, on the team. And then also price is, is one of the elements, but it's not the only. That's the, that's one of the benefits of using the CSP. We can use other evaluating criteria and not just price. As we all know, that lowest price is not always the best, so. But do you have any other questions?
No, just a comment. I did go and look at the Sterling Structures website and other projects and I was impressed, so did want to comment on that.
Very good. Thank you.
Kevin, I had a question regarding this, is I was actually surprised that this was going to be under budget as well.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure, and I know we've talked about this a little bit, but that nothing was cut out from the original estimate budget.
Now, in what you'll typically see on a construction contract, we'll have another line item for VE, value engineering, and we'll meet with the contractor after there's an apparent successful proposal on the project and we'll go through ideas that they may have, some ideas that our team has. We'll bring in our electricians, plumbers, everyone just kind of talks about some things that we can maybe save money on. We did that process here, but we've already kind of worked through our design standards to incorporate a lot of the ideas that we've had in the past. So you don't see any value engineering on this, so it's, it's the way it was bid, so we haven't cut anything out of the project.
And I say that because of the rising cost in labor and lumber and metal and everything.
We were very fortunate.
Very fortunate. Thanks for your hard work on this.
Lumber took about a 400% drop.
Yeah, well, it is unfortunate for that. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions?
A comment. I think the question was asked, how do we decide what facility needs to be replaced or what's going to be the next construction item? We have a committee made up of community members and they visit the different schools that have possible issues or they're age-related. So that decision is made by a future facilities committee and then they bring that and it's discussed with Dr. Powell and then the board looks at it. So nothing is done without a thorough investigation and an assessment of what is the most needed project to make our district the safest, the most convenient and the most comfortable for students' learning. That's the object of the entire process of school buildings, is that they're safe, that they're, make learning very easy for our students and that they're buildings that our students and our staff can take priority in. Thank you.
I think, you know, board members, you have to remember and be really proud that we've spent over $500 million in the last 10 years on campus improvements and rebuilds. We talk about Pasadena High School and the fact that the voters did not want to replace that campus. That was again, a decision made by the community, but we have beautiful new campuses. I just sent the board beautiful pictures of Red Bluff Elementary and what those kids are experiencing, but you can go on and on, whether you say Pomeroy, Cruz, Richie, Jackson, you name it. But that's not just the north side of town. We have beautiful facilities across our district. We are not a small district. I think I said that earlier. We're the 17th largest district in Texas. So I'm not talking about building five schools. I'm not talking about building 10 schools. We have over 70 facilities that we have to prioritize and that goes to HVAC, that goes to roof, that goes to foundations. This building was not built to be an ad building, I think Danny Brewster was really enlightening, he's written letters, he's talked about this before, it was a short-term solution. In 1985, I was in school, I was a student at Pasadena High School, I had no say in it, no one came to PHS and said, hey, what do you think? Should we do this, or should we not? But again, I think it was the best option at the time, I'm not blaming anyone, I think it was seen as a short-term solution, we've been talking about this for over a decade, and I think if I'm responsible for not throwing money into a pit and lighting it on fire, then I pushed forward with this.
Absolutely.
And I think it's important, I think the people in this building are important, I think the teachers we hire are important, I think the image that we serve is important, and I think it's important for Pasadena community as a whole. And we will make sure we're good neighbors wherever we're at, and as we leave facilities, we've never been nothing but great neighbors.
Amen.
That's true.
Thank you.
Well, you know, we had a situation like this many years ago, Golden Acres, and I've mentioned this before, we spent thousands upon thousands of dollars trying to correct an air problem, and a moisture problem, and a mold problem, hundreds of thousands of dollars, it couldn't be fixed. Fortunately, we had a fund balance that allowed us to fix and build a brand-new school, and that's what we did. You know, I think we have an obligation to provide safe facilities, healthy facilities for our employees, and I am tickled to death about this new administration building, so has anybody got any more questions?
Yes.
I'm going to call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
Okay, motion passes. We will move on with the new administration bill. Consideration possible approval of material testing services agreement for the new Thompson, did I say this, no, no.
No.
Thompson Intermediate School Replacement Project for a cost of $152,000.
So move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hold in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval of blanket electrical service easements to Center Point Houston Electric LLC for the new maintenance operations and warehouse facility project.
So move.
Second.
Which my Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan, any comments or questions? Hold in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval allows expenditure authorization AEA number one, excuse me, number 01, for the Bondi Intermediate School HVAC upgrades Phase II project in the amount, credit amount of $35,500.
So move.
Second.
Which my Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan, any comments or questions?
We always take that credit amount, and that's a Sterling project, and it's on timeline, right? Okay, love timeline.
Always like to get money back, like we voted, right?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold, oppose no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval of change order number 02 for the new maintenance, operation, and warehouse facility project in the amount of $362,254.17.
So move.
Second.
Which my Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan, comments or questions?
You said 02, 002, does it matter?
Sorry?
You said 02, 002, does it matter?
002.
Okay.
That's what I said, who knows? My glasses are not on.
That's okay.
Any discussion? I talked to Kevin about this today, and this is a sad thing, that we're in to pay $362 because we can't get permits. I have a very good friend, most of you know Calvin Pawitski, he very, very involved in The Bridge Over Troubled Waters, and they have a new facility raising money for, for kids.
Yeah.
They just lost $800,000 because of permit delays, and that's a nonprofit organization, pretty sick, but anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. Construction update is there for anybody who's interested. I do need to appoint board committees, they're somewhere in here, okay. Personnel committee with Vicky Morgan, chairperson, Pelo Gonzales Florestalair, Casey Phelan, Polly Legislative, Policy Legislative Committees, Nelda Sullivan, chairperson, Kenneth Fernandez and Crystal Dabala. Facility Committee is Kenny Fernandez, chairperson, Casey Phelan and Casey, Crystal Dabala. Naming Committee, Nelda Sullivan, chairperson, all board members. Budget Committee, Vicky Morgan, chairman, all board members. Now we have public comments on non-related subjects, non-related agenda subject, Mr. Herman Williams. Three minutes, Herman.
Three minutes. I'll let you know in one minute.
All right, well, this is chapter two of what I didn't finish at the last board meeting, so I'm trying to, now I know what three minutes is like, I'll try to get through this pretty quick. I was disturbed quite a bit when I saw the, the May 18th board meeting that was held here, and part of it was with one, our latest trustee that was inducted and thing, and I looked at, and of course, when I looked at this thing three or four times, I kept wondering who and what is being said to who. And first of all, when I looked at it, I saw all the red shirts and the thing, I thought somebody come from South Houston Pep rally, but I finally figured out after a little more research of figuring out, that this is really was a symbolism of, of the Democratic Socialist Association of America, and that's kind of one of the symbolism they have when they're dealing with social and political injustice and inequities. Now, whether that had anything to do with that candidate or not, it was just there to support that candidate, and of course, we had a ringleader that came from Fiel, and he was, and I was trying to figure out who he was talking to, or what he was thinking to, none of what was pointed out was anything new to this board of directors, I mean, there was nothing. You know, I don't know how many times I had to hear about 80,000, over 80,000 students are Hispanic, you don't think we don't know that, but we had to hear it. So I got to thinking, this is really being recorded for something else, it's not really for any end benefit of who was there that day, and everything on that day was, nothing was positive. Nobody said anything about what the district had gone through in the pandemic time, nobody talked about PISD, Proud, nobody talked about anything but negative, and it's, that is absolutely terrible. Let's, let's talk a little bit about this, political injustice, we talked about having to postpone being inducted because we had, we had voter, vote recount, we talked about social injustice, let's see, a water problem at Pasadena that was a made-up forest to begin with, and we talked about air conditioning, it's still not working at Pasadena High School.
One minute.
And then we talked about, let's see, inequity in North Pasadena, they don't have any representation, only 4% of the registered voters voted for that candidate in, in North Pasadena. I tell you that the people don't vote in this election because they, they don't see a problem with the district. In closing, run for something, that was the organizers for our candidate, and on her bio page it was, she didn't write it because you can tell by what it was, but this is what was said, "After working with the high school senior, Crystals has witnessed how their environment impacts a student's future, deteriorating schools, schools in close proximity to chemical plants, lack of recreation and activities, and a segregated city influence, and why she is running for the school board. She will improve the conditions for students and teachers. The city is 80% Latino, yet the school board is composed of older, affluent, white people who are not representative of the majority of the population. Her district pushes students to college without preparing underserved communities with tools." And, and more, but my point is, get positive.
Amen.
Thank you, Herman. If there are no other business before this board, next board meeting is August the 24th, is that right?
Yes.
What is it?
That's right. Go ahead.
What do you say?
The 24th, yes.
Okay, I hear a motion?
Moves that August 24th be our next regular board meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan, we have 24th board meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion passes. No other business before this board, we are adjourned. Thank you all.